There is 140 people in here.
We set it up so we would be at capacity. That's why we did it the way we did it, so. So if you are not in a chair, you will need to go to the lobby to watch the meeting.
They'll have to stream it on their phones.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, streaming on the phone in the lobby?
No lobby?
No, the TV's not working.
Really? Yeah.
Good evening and welcome to the regular school board for South Washington County schools. It is August 26, 2021 at 6:30 PM. We are in the District Service Center in Cottage Grove, Minnesota. 1.0 is roll call.
Melinda Dolez?
Here.
Simi Petnaig?
Here.
Louise Hines?
Here.
Pat Driscoll?
Here.
Sharon Van Leer?
Here.
Katie Schwartz?
Here.
Tracy Burnett?
Here.
2.0, please rise and join us for pledgeable.
Pledgeance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
3.0 is the approval of our agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
By Sharon and second by Pat?
Louise.
Louise, sorry. Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 4.0 is public comment. The purpose of public comment. Thank you.
All right, moving on to 5.0 consent.
I have taken a motion to approve consent.
Second, moved by Sharon and second by Pat. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I have abstained.
Six -- oh, I'm sorry?
I have abstained.
Okay. Melinda's abstaining. All right, 6.0 information item.
Superintendent Nielsen, members of the audience. So at the request of the school board, about three, four years ago, they had asked that we give an update, a financial update to the board at least once a month. Tonight's budget update will focus on enrollment. As of Monday, August 17th, our K-12 student count was 18,653. That's a little ahead of budget. A little bit of background on that is that at the end of 1920, we had our highest enrollment ever of 18,754. The 2021 year was tough with COVID and everything, and our enrollment dropped down to 18,450. That drop in enrollment of 300 students affected us financially to the tune of about $3 million. That is one.
I'm sorry, but we have to have order, otherwise we can't finish our business. We would appreciate it.
It would be you.
Be respectful.
So as we watch enrollment come in, we kind of watch it like, you know, it's a stack ticker to me. We have to see what comes in every day and we check them every day. Enrollment usually rises up pretty well up until September 1st, but then we have to wait till about October 1st to see if many people had, if some didn't show that were there the year before and things like that. This count right now includes those enrolled in the Elementary Virtual Learning Academy. There's about 310 students enrolled in that. And the impact of COVID-19 was felt last year as we talked about the drop of 320 students. So when we do our budget, enrollment is probably our largest factor in our revenue. Because our state aid revenue is calculated by multiplying the number of pupil units, and a pupil unit is a calculation based on the number of students you have. We, students are classified as an average daily membership. This is the history of our average daily membership since 2017, and then it's got the projections I've made up to 2027. These projections are done with a simple cohort survival method. We also have factors right now happening with increased building of houses in our district, but we have not seen a big impact of those housing projects yet. So we're showing a growth of about 1% a year. And we've had that growth for probably the last 15 years of about 1% a year. That's still about 180 kids, 190 students a year. We had the drop, as you can see, from 2020 to 2021, and now we're seeing it crawl back up a little bit more. As I said, this is a very important factor in our revenue, and we have to watch it constantly. It's also a factor in our staffing. We'll talk about that in a second. So in general, each student we have here raises about $10,352 in state aids and levies. The basic formula that the state pays out per student is about $6,700 per student. They raise at about 2% a year. This year, they raised at 2.45% and 2% in the year after that. So about $1 million in revenue to us is about 97 students. So get 97 more students, it raises about another $1 million. Secondary students are weighted higher than elementary students, creating adjusted pupil units. So those students in K through six are rated as a 1.0 and seven through 12 as a 1.2. That number is important as we look at our revenues, as you'll get paid more for students in obviously grade seven through 12. In addition to receiving state aids for K-12 students, we also get state aid for early childhood special education students. We're funded for about 25% per student. And the reason for that is because they're not going to school all day long, and these are children all the way from birth through five years old. We generally have over 1,000 students in this program. We get funded for about 250 of them at full funding. We also have a couple of programs called voluntary pre-kindergarten, VPK, and a program called School Ratingness Plus. And those are preschool programs in which we are funded as a regular student for those because of state programming, special state programs. Once again, those are funded for when they're in school, not for a full day. They're in school for half a day. Then it also gets funded for extended time called targeted services, and those are students who work beyond the school day to catch up on their grades or need a little extra help. Our funding is reduced by post-secondary education option students, as the state has arranged to pay for tuition for students who are still in high school that attend college. Most of our students attend Century College or Inver Grove Heights Community College, and some attend the University of Minnesota. We have made arrangements at Century College, a totally legal arrangement, in which we still get the full funding for those students and we pay Century College the tuition it costs for them to go to school there. That saves the district about $100,000 a year. So as we look at enrollment and we look at what our budget forecasts are, and we try to forecast as often as we can so we can kind of make plans and see what's going on, we have to make certain assumptions. Because we know that all forecasts are wrong, we can only deal with the assumptions we're making and do the best we can. So the assumptions we're making in the following forecast are that enrollment increases about 1% a year, that the basic formula increases 2% a year after the year 2022, and that is determined by the state legislature, that our special education revenue would increase about $1.2 million a year. We get about $35 million a year for special education revenue. That is basically based on the expenses we spend on special education, and we generally get refunded or reimbursed about half of our expenses. So as our expenses go up, our revenue will go up too. That wages and benefits total packages increases about 2.5% a year. That for every 16 students we add, we add a licensed position, and that's the ratio we've been at for the last five, six years. And that all other expenses increase about 2.5%. And those are expenses like transportation, utilities, supplies, things like that. So as we look to the future, and we look at our projected revenues and expenses, we look at '21, '22, the year we're in now, we have our revenues are more than our expenses. '22, '23, we're still ahead of the game a little. '23, '24, and by the time we get to '24, '25, '25, '26, and '26, '27, our expenses start outpacing our revenues. The reason for that is because of our revenue, about $260 million a year, about 53% of that is based on state aid. So that may go up 2%, but the rest of our revenue does not. And if expenses are rising at 2.5%, you're going to see a gap sooner or later. So what does this all get down to? It gets down to what our projected fund balance is going to be, because that's how we have to judge our financial position. The state has said you cannot go below negative 2.5% of your expenditures in fund balance. Our board, our board approved goal is 5% to 9%. So at the end of '21, '22, we're going to be around 7%. And then '22, '23, and '23, '24, we should be up around 8%. But as the expenses start outpacing the revenues, you can see how the fund balance is dropping to under 2% by '26, '27. And it kind of accentuates the need for a revoke and replace referendum in which the board is asking for additional $350 per pupil unit and to add inflation to that amount so that those revenues from the operating levy will increase at the same pace as the revenues from state aid. With that, that's our latest update, and I'll answer any questions the board may have.
Dan, I just have one, Dan, is it on? I don't know. I just have one question, which is that if the levy, if the referendum this fall passes, then would we stabilize, do you think, in that, would we be stabilized in that 5% to 9% range, or would we know how long that would keep us from having the same concerns that we have when you look at the out years, '26, '27?
Yeah, if the operating levy passes, which are the additional 6 to 6.5 million dollars a year, plus an inflationary factor, that should stabilize us for at least until the year '26, '27, based on the assumptions that we're using.
Any other questions for Dan? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, 7.0 discussion items. There are none. 8.0 action items. 8.1, approval of the resolution rescinding placement of teachers on unrequested leaves of absence, and our Director of Human Resources, Kevin Witherspoon, will present this item.
Thank you, good evening. So tonight I'm here for requesting approval to rescind the placement of teachers on unrequested leave of absence. I know that in many of our board sessions, we've talked about unrequested leave of absence. So today I'm asking to rescind the majority of them. We still have a point for German teacher that's placed on unrequested leave of absence, but everyone else has been rescinded and rehired. Tonight I ask, my recommendation is for approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
So moved by Pat and second by Sharon, right? All right, resolution, so we need a roll call vote.
Melinda Dolez?
Yes.
Simi Petnek?
Yes.
Louise Heinz?
Yes.
Pat Driscoll?
Yes.
Sharon Van Leeah?
Yes.
Katie Schwartz?
Yes.
Tracy Burnett?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
8.2, approval of our policy changes.
Thank you. At our August 12th meeting, we brought 18 policies forward on a first reading. The following policies have been reviewed and revised to reflect updates in Minnesota statute and the definition of terms and legal references along with cross-references. The board committee members, three board committee members, along with administrators and staff within the district have reviewed the policies. And this evening, I am seeking approval of these 18.
So move.
Moved by Pat and second by Melinda. Any other questions on any of the policy changes? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 8.3 is approval of resolution adopting face covering policy. Superintendent.
Thank you. 8.3, our resolution adopting face covering policy. The purpose of the report is to review the guidance around face coverings and seek approval of the resolution, which would then adopt policy 808 face coverings. As you've seen in the board packet that was posted last Friday, the policy remains in draft until following this meeting. It is important to know just a couple of things when we look through the policy. It will be a resolution, so it will be a roll call vote. But in the general policy, what we'd like to point out is that for students age two and through grade eight, all persons are required to wear a face covering when they are in any building that is owned, leased, or operated by or on behalf of the district when students from age two and above through grade eight are present, regardless of vaccination status, unless an exemption or exception stated in the policy applies. So that is for our age two and through grade eight. Grade nine through 12+, keeping in mind that we do service students through age 21, students and district employees are strongly recommended to wear a face covering when they're in any building that is owned, leased, or operated on behalf of the district, and serve students from grades nine through 12th grade or beyond, regardless of vaccination status, again unless an exemption is stated in this poli, or regardless, or except if an exemption is stated in this policy. Students in grades nine through 12+, and this is an adjustment after talking with our health staff, and this is something that was done previously, students in grades nine through 12+ sent to the health office with symptoms of COVID will be asked to wear a face covering while being assessed if it's necessary for them to remain in the nurse's office. And while we have a lot of drivers at the high school, there are times when some of our younger students, ninth and 10th graders, don't have that driver's license, and so they may need to wait in the nurse's office until someone is available to pick them up.
All right. All right, so I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, so moved by Pat and second by Louise, okay. Any questions or comments on the policy? It was moved by Pat and second by Louise. Yeah, so we don't have any other questions, comments. Okay, so we do need a roll call vote.
Melinda Dolez?
Yes.
Simi Petnek?
Yes.
Louise Heinz?
Yes.
Pat Driscoll?
Yes.
Sharon Van Leeah?
Yes.
Katie Schwartz?
Yes.
Tracy Burnett?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. 9.0 is our superintendent's report. We need to have, we need to have it back to order. We need to have it back to order or we're going to have to clear the room. I'm sorry, we have to, we have to. I'm sorry, we have to, we have to. 9.0, superintendent's report.
Thank you. I think despite having to just clear the room, which I think as a school district does not look good that there's such division, I'm going to proceed on talking about the great things that are happening, because in just a couple of days, we have kids coming. So first, for the community, this week we welcomed back bus drivers, our new paraprofessionals, nutrition services staff. And as part of that, I welcomed each of those groups back, and certainly there was excitement. We know that we are going to be facing some challenges with bus drivers, along with nutrition staff, as we see other districts are doing the same thing. And so I think for our communities, just to be aware that we too face bus driver shortages and staffing shortages. And so if we have any individuals out there that would like a part-time job, I'm sure that we have something available. I'd also like to share with the board one of the highlights of the week, and those are elementary assessment days. And if you remember on the calendars, we have two days set aside for our elementary assessments, where students come in, bring school supplies. It's just a great opportunity to connect. And so these were some of the thoughts from our school principals. The common themes of the conversations were the excitement about their child or children having a more normal start to the school year, their children being able to reconnect with or make new friends, gratitude around the mitigation efforts that were being put in place to ensure safety and having the opportunity to be inside the building, seeing the classroom, and meeting with the classroom teacher. Probably one of the biggest excitements was just being able to be in the hallways and see the school. We forgot how many kids weren't in our schools, and that, while this is focused on elementary, we have that same thing happening at our middle level with some of our students who were in VLA who hadn't even seen the school. So certainly exciting. Another principal does a random poll out in the hallways. One of his favorite parts of the assessment days were being able to connect with the students. There was one question that I asked every student I saw. Are you excited to come back? 10 times out of 10, the answer was a very excited yes. When followed up with why, the responses ranged from being able to use a locker, true elementary style, to being able to play on the playground, and every day being able to see friends. It was shared that there was a positive feel in the building as students and families interacted with classroom teachers, finding lockers, and talking about what they were looking forward to this year. Another principal just talked about the great turnout. Most of our schools said perhaps there were just a couple of students missing per grade level. Some of that did have to do with power outage. I don't know if you knew that we had a couple of power outages which stopped the assessments. And the reason that was is it was so dark in our schools that we couldn't find a space to continue those. Positive energy and excitement from kids, parents, and staff. Kids told us how excited they were to be back, and many wanted to physically hug their teachers. And the staff reflected on the assessment days during a staff meeting with a common theme of excitement, joy, happiness, and laughter in the school.